I'd like to call Riverside Township Board of Trustees. Meeting from May 10th, 2016 to order. John, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the board.
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Ertler?
Present.
Trustee Giesman?
Present.
Trustee Kowinski?
Here.
Supervisor Tusher?
Present.
Let the record note, Clerk Plows also in attendance.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of April 12th, 2016, public hearing?
So moved.
Of the 2016-17 budget. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing then, roll call.
Trustee Kowinski?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
I'm gonna pass, I wasn't present.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of April 12th, 2016, board meeting? So moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing then, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kowinski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do I hear approval of minutes of April 12th, 2016, closed session? So moved. Do I hear a second?
Second. Oh. Wayne can say it.
Look, McCoy.
Wayne can second. Let Wayne second.
I second.
Any questions, concerns?
I, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
This is indicating that action was taken at that closed session and it's my understanding that you can't take action in a closed session. You discuss and you come out and you take the action in the open meeting.
So it's actually just in and out. When you go in. And that's what we did. You have to make the motion to go in, you gotta make the motion to go out.
Right. But it is a meeting.
Correct.
So what's, um...
I mean, there should just be a record of the discussion rather than an actual motion.
A discussion was to give a 3 percent salary increase.
That should be in the regular minutes, I think, right?
The motion to be made to accept that, it is.
Correct.
But the closed session from April 12th would just say, should say, the second paragraph, land should say "discussion".
Right.
Yeah, however you want to phrase it and that...
But it's not a motion.
It's not a motion.
You got that?
It should be said, the second paragraph should just be said "discussion", correct?
Discussion by the trustees to give a...
Well, regarding salary.
Regarding salary, review on everything.
Review on other employees.
Any other questions or concerns? Do I hear a motion?
Ask, correct.
Ask, correct.
I didn't hear. All right. So moved.
Second, okay, Wayne? Uh, Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing then, roll call.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kowinski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Communications.
We have one communication this evening. It's from the Riverside Lions Club thanking us for, um... our grant for their chicken dinner and for the use of the room upstairs.
Visitors of marks of pain. Supervisors report none, trustees report none.
Um, I will say we, um, the seniors this month, we had, um, we had our first, well, we had an exercise class where I had, uh, between 17 and 20 people. And then we had a Cinco de Mayo party lunch and we had tacos and a mariachi band and I had 35 for that. So that went really well. People really enjoyed them.
Okay. Men's health report reports. Any?
No, we are very happy to have a full board.
Yay!
It's about time.
It's about time. I think we've had some couple of really good new members.
Makes the meetings longer, huh?
No, not really.
Okay, old business.
Business.
Update on the auditorium plaque for Judy Verter Pinka.
Okay, I passed out a sheet to everybody. This is, you've gotta ignore the lines around the words "to the right", but this is basically, I think, what we had decided on, uh, previously.
So you double check the dates?
I double check the dates, yep. And I'll triple check them.
The only comment I would have would be on the top, instead of "the auditorium", "this auditorium".
This auditorium, okay.
I mean, that's why anybody disagree with that?
No, I think it's, I think that's better.
Yep, and there's an extra word "the" in there after "dedicated".
Dedicated, yep. All right.
Get rid of "the".
Okay, so it's dedicated to, dedicated to the memory of Judy Verter Pinka. Okay.
So that's gonna be on the plaque as well? That statement?
Uh...
Or no?
This auditorium?
Yeah.
Yes. Unless we don't want it. Unless we just want Judy Verter Pinka 1919...
No, I think, I think this auditorium...
Get out of, like I did with Gary Wood, you know, for this room here. Yeah, it should be on there.
Yeah.
And then, um, I thought we had...
Wait, okay. All in favor of the corrected, um...
Do we make a motion, I guess?
I'm looking for a motion because we're spending money on this. You know, just, you know, that we're all in agreement.
You're looking mostly to approve this?
Yes.
Okay.
With the change from "the" to this.
With the, with the changes on the plaque. I'll make the motion that we accept this.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any questions, concerns?
Um, I think this is the appropriate place to bring this up. I thought we had made a motion to send in the deposit for this a few months...
We did, we have sent in.
Well, according to Marge, we have not sent in. So, um, I don't know if we need another motion for that because I thought we had made that motion a few months ago.
Oh, we did.
No, if we made the motion and it wasn't sent, it should, it has to be sent.
Slip up.
I don't know why he didn't get it.
Well, that's, well, you know, we looked, I had Marge go through the records to see if it was sent and he didn't get it for some reason. But she went through the records and said there was, a check was never sent.
See, I thought she told me there was a long time ago.
Well, I thought it was too. That's why, because he said, "I never got your deposit". So, we'll need to...
You could track down the check number.
Yeah, and...
Well, I had Marge go through the checks.
What meeting?
Oh, I asked Marge to go through the checks.
Okay, so no, there was no check.
So it wasn't sent.
Okay, okay. I'll have Marge send out a two thousand dollar check.
Okay. Um, and then do you want an update on the possible second plaque?
Okay, wait a minute. Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to put that away.
Okay, wait a minute. We have a motion on the floor.
No. Oh, wait, do we have, oh, yes, we do have a motion on the floor.
And any other questions or concerns? Hearing then, roll call.
Trustee Kowinski?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Okay, now the second plaque, I've been in contact with the company that's donating the plaque and they suggested that, um, we get input from Judy's relatives in the Czech Republic. So, I relayed all this to Joe Toppinka and he is actually going to the Czech Republic this week, so he is going to get their input. So, what I was thinking is we'd have a little story about Judy and this would be probably about the size of an eight and a half, 11 piece of paper, which would fit nicely either below or above our plaque. And it would have a story about Judy and then maybe it would have some type of blessing or Czech saying on it in Czech and then the English translation.
Now, my only concern, you know, they're consulting with the Czech Republic. Czech Republic has nothing to do with this. Nothing to do with the township at all.
Her relatives in the Czech Republic.
I have, you know, it doesn't matter to me. If there's a lot of Czech, Lithuanian stuff in there, let, it should be going over to the, um, on 22nd and Oak Brook to the, um, main headquarters of...
Oh, yeah.
Or just Sokol. You know, I'm, you know, there nothing can be in there about political stuff, parties, you know, do with history, but, you know, my opinion is you don't get involved with a lot of the Czech history and they're going over there and bringing stuff back and stuff like that.
I think, I think it should be in all English too. I think you're opening up doors.
What's that, John?
Well, they wanted to put something in Czech on there, you know.
Right.
This is a U.S. historic landmark building here in the United States of America. We speak English here.
That's right.
You do that, you're gonna open up a door. Some other group lining this sign here, I can't read, another one over here, another one over here. This is the Town Hall.
Right.
This is the United States.
I agree.
Very much against any other language like that in this building.
Yes.
What, okay, what if we had the Czech, and I'm just throwing this out, I'm not saying yay or nay, what if we had the Czech blessing just in English?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, all right, that's what...
Yeah, I mean, you know...
Okay. That's fine, I'll do whatever, you know, um...
I don't, I don't know what the Czech population is in Riverside anymore, but I'm sure it's, no, I'm being, I'm serious, but I'm sure it's down because...
Well, I mean, you know, if there's something in Czech...
Changed, you know.
Yeah. Somebody from Molly's boat, from Ireland can come over and say, "How come? I want, you know, something..."
Gaelic or something, yeah.
Um, Gaelic.
No, this is...
Okay, I was just throwing out what he mailed that to this building.
I mean, you know, and we have to see in, in writing before he starts.
Oh, right, oh...
What they're planning.
Oh, right, we, we will...
And we have to approve or disapprove.
Right, absolutely. In every correspondence I had with him, I said the township will have to approve this.
Because, you know, it, it is not his or his, her family and Czech, Lithuanian decision what goes into Riverside Town Hall.
Right, that's what...
Okay, that's, you know, anybody disagrees with me, you know, other opinion, bring it up. Okay, so now you kind of know.
I know, that's what...
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is village approval of the inter, signing of intergovernmental agreement, which has been floating around quite a long time, changes from us, changes from them, the village. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I think it's adapt, isn't it? Don't we adapt these resolutions? I make a motion that we adopt, uh, resolution number one for 2016, uh, for the approval of the intergovernmental agreement with the village of Riverside.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns?
Just a comment, we already gave them the money, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're, we're okay there. It was just the agreement was a slight problem.
Correct.
Let me do this before I forget. Um, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kowinski?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Under new business, grants, first grant coming up is for Riverside Art Center. And they have pretty few pages of stuff for the art center. Here.
I make a motion that we approve this grant for 8250s. A second of all...
Any questions, concerns?
No, that's, we gave, we granted them the same last year, so...
Any questions, concerns? Hearing then...
Now, what is exactly is it for? That's what this, to, maybe to, to help meet their budget?
Yeah, Row, yeah, I mean, they put on a lot of group act and have artists and teachers that they have to pay and, you know, um, different functions that they do put on. It's different than Row.
Right, okay.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing then, roll call.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kowinski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Second one is North Riverside Little League. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant the North Riverside Little League $450.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing then, roll call.
Trustee Kowinski?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, the next one up is, uh, Boy Scouts of America. The corporate office, is it?
Halfway to Adventure Council.
Okay. They're asking for $2,500. In the past, we've given them $2,000. Do I hear a motion?
Once again, what is this for?
Boy Scouts of America.
Yeah, I know, but to use, to be used as what? To be used how?
Use it in, uh, programs to help scouts, particularly in this town with the, you know, projects that they do. The scouts, this past year, in Riverside has created a pollination station at the Riverside Library, uh, book reflectors on holes for 50 stop signs in town, did work at the scout cabin, and there are four other projects that have been approved and that have carried out for 2016 in town. So, we're working with the youth in Riverside through a couple of different scouting units and the primary goal is to develop citizenship, leadership, appreciation of the outdoors.
Now, who pays for those, like the reflectors and stuff like that?
The scouts are responsible for raising funds for their own projects, but many times organizations will contribute to their projects as well. The beneficiary organizations as well as the scouting units will contribute.
How many Boy Scouts are there in your group?
Uh, I actually work at the district level as a volunteer.
In Riverside?
In Riverside, I know there's a true...
He knows.
Twenty-four, the true bottom row has probably, I think it's around 50 or less right now.
Fifty?
Hey, I have first trusty 10.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yes.
I don't know the exact number, but it's around 50.
Good. Same country also has a few.
Find those numbers, they're between the five local unit there we have in Riverside, we serve over 250.
200 Boy Scouts or 50?
Wow, that's wonderful.
Within the township.
That's right.
I make a motion that we grant the Boy Scouts of America the $2,500.
I second.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing then, roll call.
Is that, is that where it's supposed to go though, or is it specifically to this pathway to Adventure Council?
The, the rural organization that serves Riverside.
That's okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing then, roll call.
Trustee Kowinski?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Thanks for your leadership with the scouts.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, it's great organization.
Hauser Parent Teachers Association for paw prints, uh... There's an attached sheet for what paw prints is, it's, you know, what they do. And on the back, it's handwritten, I think everybody else's got a copy. Serves 200 students in Riverside, North Riverside, and Brookfield communities. Do I hear a motion to grant Hauser PTO?
Does anybody hear from Hauser? That's what...
I hear from them for the food drive.
Yeah.
But that's...
Oh, so this is for prizes if they do well? Is that right?
Right.
Okay.
Gift certificates, small gifts.
I'll make a motion that we grant the Hauser Parent Teacher Organization the $750 for their designated purposes here.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing then, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kowinski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, next grant for North Riverside Autumn Fest grant. We have done this in the past and if we have any questions, we have a representative.
We've granted the money in the past for the Auto-Fest?
Yes. We do face painting, we do the face painting.
Yeah, no, I understand it, but I can't find it on the...
In the bouncy stuff?
In the bouncy house.
I've heard the chili coke.
Yeah, I'm looking forward in the grants list that I can't find it, that's all I'm saying.
A balloon twister, a large petting zoo.
You looking at Riverside?
Free special entertainment. Over 1,500 people attend this event. Do I hear a motion to grant $1,325?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
To the North Riverside Arts and Recreation Autumn Fest.
Hmm, no, to purchase.
You know, to purchase.
I'm sorry, intergovernmental, they can't do it, you're right, purchase.
So it'd be 700 for the, um, zoo and then Circus Boy, 300 and, what does Circus Boy do?
He's a balloon artist.
I'm sorry, what?
Balloon artist.
Oh, balloon artist, okay. So 325 to him and then face, the face painting, 300.
Right, that's, that's all pro... Well, you're just, you're writing one check though for that, right?
No, we're writing three checks.
Yeah.
We'll have to change the motion here?
Not really.
I could, I'll, I'll put this in the main, in the minutes.
Please.
Yes, to purchase both three items.
Correct, okay, thank you.
I'm assuming the date is Friday, September 16th?
Yes.
Okay.
The only concern I have, and a reminder, not really a concern, reminder, because you've done me in the past, that you put "sponsored by Riverside Township".
Absolutely. I think we could have signed it for you as well.
Yeah, okay, you know, we just, so that people know, you know, what's going on with us too. Okay, any other questions or concerns? Hearing then, roll call.
Trustee Kowinski?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, next grant is for Bez. That's a very good organization. They'll, people, especially in the wintertime, someplace to go and sleep, but it's like on a Friday for a certain basis.
Yeah, they're supposed to be putting up a building on East Avenue in Agden, right across the street from, is that this same Bez plus, right across the street from the 7-Eleven?
I don't know, but it sounds familiar.
Yeah, they're supposed to be putting up some...
It sounds familiar.
Where Barry Berry lives?
Huh?
No.
Where Barry Berry lives?
No, well, that's a...
You know the car wash?
For the car wash.
Yeah, right across, yeah, right out. Right, across the street from the car wash.
Excellent, the car wash out to East Avenue, which would be straight across the street from there.
And the other way, straight across from 7-Eleven.
Right.
So I think, they're supposed to be building, is that this, is that the same thing? I'm not, I wasn't sure.
I'm not sure.
Well, the work, I think it's the same organization and they do more than provide housing, if you read through this. I thought this was really surprising.
What?
Surprising how many individuals in Riverside Township were in the situations described here, according to their, their calculations.
Well, I think a couple is probably more than Riverside Township. I know for a fact.
Oh, yeah.
LaGrange Library, I mean, in the wintertime, they're inside all the time, they can't, it's a public building, so they can't turn them away, you know.
Right, I mean, you know, that's all the libraries, that, that's even this building if they wanted to.
Sure.
Yeah, we understand, yes, that's right.
Warming.
So, uh, did I hear, I can't remember where we're at.
I think we need a motion to approve.
Do I hear a motion to grant $1,000 to, um, the Bez organization?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing then, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kowinski?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
TOI website, basically renewal of... Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to renew the TOI website services form, $175.
Bless you.
Hey, bless you.
Thank you, thank you.
Second, about...
Do I hear any questions or concerns? Hearing then, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Was that yes?
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I understand. Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kowinski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next is Township Perspective Magazine.
It looks like we missed the deadline. The deadline is May 7.
I'll bet they'll take it anyway. You know, um, do we want to advertise on the perspective?
It'd be nice if we could still get it in.
Yeah.
If we can get it in, we get it in, if we don't, we don't.
Are you gonna call tomorrow to find out?
Are you going to call tomorrow to find out if we approved this today?
Yeah.
So, we wanted to, um, what do we want, like an eighth of a page?
Half page, eighth of a page.
And I would say-
Quarter page.
Quarter page is $250.
Eighth of a page is one fifty.
Fifty. And do we know what we're going to say? Like Riverside Township probably salutes?
And then, you know, it could be as simple as Riverside Township, um, and then the names of the elected officials.
So that'd be, so we want, then we want a fourth of a page for $250.
Right.
Okay. I make the-
Make the motion?
I'll make the motion that, uh, we spend $250 for a fourth of the page ad for the seventy-fifth anniversary Township Perspective Magazine.
Second the motion.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing on roll call.
Trusty Kowinski?
Yes.
Trusty Giesman?
Yes.
Trusty Erdler?
Yes.
Trusty Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, TAC annual dues? Uh, let's see. Um, it's for $500. Do I hear a motion to pay the dues for, um, Township officials of Cook County? The amount of 500.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Questions, concerns?
Yeah, I wish Fran were here, because she's on that board now, because I don't know what we're paying for. You know, I mean, there's, this is information from the state legislature, well, we don't have Bob Porter anymore. Um, so any information's coming directly from TOI, I would expect.
Isn't that, they got Crabtree, isn't either one now?
Yeah, but he's TOI.
I'm sorry?
He's from T- Township officials of Illinois.
Oh.
So that's not Cook County. Networking opportunities, okay, they have two, two, um, programs a year, right, the spring and the fall. The directory is online.
Yeah, we don't get that anymore.
Directory's online. Um, educational seminars and workshops?
They couldn't have, hmm.
Well, they have one this next week, they have one this week, which is the first thing I've seen, and it's pretty much of interest to assessors.
Yeah.
Um, maybe they're going to do more of those, hopefully.
Okay, I'm thinking, approve this, is what I'm thinking, and then we will keep an eye out and track for what TAC is putting on for next years, and decide next year whether or not we want to be part of TAC. Although I do think TAC is a good organization.
Yeah, no, I do too, but I, I think, um, you know, I'd like to see them doing more, and, and-
Well, it's a shame to get rid of, what's his name?
Bob Porter?
Yeah, Bob Porter. So, do I hear a motion, uh, I already made a mo-
I already asked for a motion.
I did.
He already did.
Did I get a second?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing on roll call.
Trusty Clark?
Uh, yes.
Trusty Erdler?
Yes.
Trusty Giesman?
Yes.
Trusty Kowinski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, and then a proposal for senior, I was talking to Mary Rob, and I thought, you know, hey, it'd be kind of nice if they had this going for not just this one time, but kind of like on a weekly basis, or monthly basis. And, uh, she looked into it, and this is what, you know, they're, the instructor would pay $150 per class on a monthly basis.
My seniors were very, very interested in having a weekly exercise class. So it would, um, said it would meet in the second floor auditorium. Um, I think the, um, only work would be setting up just a few tables and chairs for them to, to sit at while they were waiting for the class. I mean, the only time, uh, th- they have to set up the coffee is when we have our regular senior meeting. So they don't have to do, set up the coffee every week.
This would be no big problem, because they got a couple of tables out there along the walls half the time anyway, you know?
Right, so just a few chairs for them to sit down.
Chairs are sitting over in the corner, guys can pick two, each can pick a couple up and put them on.
Right.
So, so this is $150 a month for seven months?
No, $150 per class.
Oh, per class?
Per class, paid on a monthly-
I thought, I thought Richard said, so that's $150 a week, is it's weekly?
It's a weekly class, yes.
And this is outside of your budget for-
This is outside of my budget, yes.
So how much would that be a year, three, six hundred a month, six thousand, seven thousand? Seven thousand a year?
Um, well, let's see, three hundred, six hundred, three, six thousand?
Yeah, seventy-two hundred.
Seventy-two hundred, okay. Yeah.
Do you think people would be interested in, on a trial basis, you did it, um, once, once or twice a month, rather than every week, to see if people really show up?
Well, they've been showing, they showed up tw- they showed up in April, and they showed up in May, so they indicate, this is a trial basis. Just because it only goes till the second week of December.
Right, that's quite expensive.
Yeah.
So, you know, we make a commitment for that many months, and then people come once a month. Or, you know, you get two or three people, I don't know if that's worth it.
Well, then, you would cancel it if there are only two or three people.
Well, we don't know.
Well, I don't know.
We don't know.
Could you?
Oh.
See, what I was talking to Mary Rob about originally is that I, I didn't know they could be this expensive, to tell you the truth. But I thought, my thinking was, have it on a weekly basis, so they get used to knowing, and then go on, see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Like, if people know about, you know, Thursday's movie day here, you know, it's a, it's just-
But if it, if it's not successful, we cancel, and we don't spend the money.
Right, if it's not successful, we can, we can cancel it.
Sure.
You can pull out anytime?
Sure.
We can set it up that way, that we can pull out.
But my only question is, you're approving it for the entire seven months, according to this, so if it's pulled out-
You've lost all, everything.
No.
No, 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 because we don't pay unless they-
Hundred and fifty a week.
I understand that.
But if we don't have the event, we're not going to spend the hundred and fifty.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying, if you approve, how much of this are you approving on a monthly basis?
Well, we could, you know, uh-
Then you have to pay it.
We could approve it, uh, for the month of-
June.
June, we could approve it for the month of June.
That's what I was thinking.
And then revisit it in July.
Do it on a monthly basis.
Will the instructor go for that?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Did, did you-
Well, we just, we just said, if nobody shows up, they can just-
Or, okay, what about every other week?
I think every other week is too confu- personally, I think it's too confusing. So I think we either do it every week, you know, if we want to do it on a trial basis for a month, then that's what we do, or we just keep it to the day the seniors meet, and do it on a monthly.
Once a month.
Do it, you know, once a month.
That may be even better.
To do it once a month?
Right, and if you can give out handouts, what they could do the other three weeks until the next one, to keep them more active, what do you think?
Give out handouts?
Yeah, what do you think?
We can do that.
What do you think?
What do you mean, handouts?
Like, like, exercise, you know, instructions, oh, we, you know, you lift your leg so many times.
Oh, you mean it written, something written, oh, yeah.
So, when you-
Sit in a chair and lift your leg.
You were at the first exercise.
I missed the last one.
You missed the May, but you were at the April.
Yes.
And how, did you enjoy that?
I like it, and I think, uh, I think it's a very attractive event, and I'm for having it once a week. Okay, are you making, um-
Before you go ask for that, just a question, did you see in your mailbox, I left you a slip of paper and a business card from somebody I met at the senior fair? And they do classes, I don't know that they're the same, I know they do something on balance, and I think they can set up other things, and I don't think they charge.
Most of the exercise instructors that I have paid for my senior bus- budget, where I have them do armchair yoga-
Yeah.
Or this exercise guide, is between $125 and $150.
All right, so if we're going to do this on a weekly basis, uh, pay on a weekly basis, uh, for $150 a month per class on a monthly basis, per class, are we doing this on a trial basis for a month, or what are we deciding?
Well, we're, we're deciding, we're discussing what we're going to do. So, um, do we want to do it for the month of June and try it, or and see?
Wouldn't, okay, yeah, I, I think, try it for the month of June, but have a bill that's monthly.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Not that we're paying them a weekly check, have a bill that's monthly.
Monthly, okay.
So, and let them know the board has to approve, you know, um, and ask them the warrants for it to be paid.
That's what he says here, $150 per class on a monthly basis, that's what he said.
That's what, um, so then, um, he would bill us, like, for the month of June, and we would pay it to him in July.
Right, and if he misses a week, then-
It's deducted, then he doesn't, uh, right, so.
Well, we'll see how June participation is, if same people come for the whole four sessions, then that's positive, and, you know, doing something for July would be, make more sense. If you get, you know, nine people in the first week, and five in the second, and three in the third, and, you know, it falls apart, then I wouldn't be too inclined to proceed.
Let it go, this is on a monthly basis.
All right.
So, um, okay, so we'll tell them that it's, we're going to do a trial basis on June.
Right.
Okay, um, and then to submit the bill. So we can do that, and so now then, what is our criteria for if this is successful? Fifteen people a class, ten people a class?
Yeah, I think fifteen people would merit, uh, a continuation.
You better show up.
Fifteen.
Fifteen people.
You better show up.
So it brings, uh, Riverside people out of their house into this building.
Right. All right, so how do you want this motion here? That we're going to do a trial basis, for the proposal for the senior, I mean, for the senior exercise class, for June, the instructor will be paid $150 per class on a monthly basis and, uh, for the trial period in the month of June. Does that make sense?
Is there a flyer we can, um, create to put out on the table and give to North Riverside, too?
You bet.
That's what, yeah, we can create a flyer.
Right, that's a good part of this.
Yeah, that's what we can, uh-
Well, North Riverside has all kinds of classes, I, I don't know if you're familiar with them up there, but I know I've taken classes in North Riverside, so I know they have-
Oh, yeah, but I'm just saying.
Exercise, too, I mean.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you know.
No, they'd be welcome.
We could advertise though.
Okay.
So what, did somebody make them?
I did.
Who seconded it?
I'll second.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing on roll call.
Trusty Kowinski?
Yes.
Trusty Giesman?
Yes.
Trusty Erdler?
Yes.
Trusty Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
September will, uh, apply for showers.
This claw side will hose you down.
Okay, under FYI, you know, you see the letter from DeMonte?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's pretty boring.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any further, uh, visitors remarks? Okay, approval of warrants.
This is just a blank.
Yeah.
Ready?
Yep.
Ready.
All right, uh, the motion that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, May 2016, in the amount of $34,473.59, as presented to the board this tenth day of May 2016.
Second the motion.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing on roll call.
Trusty Clark?
Yes.
Trusty Erdler?
Yes.
Trusty Giesman?
Yes.
Trusty Kowinski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, next, a motion that the board ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants, utility warrant, May 2016, in the amount of $1,318.58, payroll warrant, May 2016, in the amount of $16,841.87, health warrant, May 2016, in the amount of $1,455.32, monthly filings, May 2016, in the amount of $6,872.47, grants, May 2016, in the amount of $1,400, general assistance warrant, May 2016, in the amount of $3,515, and township radio players warrant, May 2016, in the amount of $200. All of the above is presented to the board this tenth day of May 2016.
Second the motion.
Questions, concerns? Hearing on roll call.
Trusty Kowinski?
Yes.
Trusty Giesman?
Yes.
Trusty Erdler?
Yes.
Trusty Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is that it, Ian?
I think so.
Yep.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Goodbye now.
Good night, all.
Hey, drive safely, Wayne.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.